We're recording, thank you.
Great, and any, any other members of the public who's the little weepy?
We have.
That's Matt.
That's Matt.
Yep, that's me. And then we have Bethany and Hale and Eric. As attendees beyond our panelists.
Okay, perfect. So if we could just go around and do a quick sort of name and role, that'd be real great.
Sure, Matt Foster Superintendent.
Mike Moriarty Assistant Superintendent.
Alan Harns, Board Member.
Mike Conchesi, Director of Finance.
Jennifer Blake, Interim Principal.
Alicia Hevers, School Board Member.
Jason?
I'm Jason Monaco, School Board Member.
All right, thank you. Oh, Erica's here. Hey, Erica.
Hi, sorry, I had joined earlier but forgot to join as a panelist, so hi.
Glad to have you.
Board Member, and so we are, we are introduced. Hi, everybody. So our first line of business is to approve our agenda for this evening. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve our agenda? To approve. We have a motion. Thanks, Alicia. Erica or Jason?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the agenda? Any proposed changes to it? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 We have our agenda, thank you. Next step is to approve our minutes from October 28th. I'm sure you all have read them carefully, as have I. So any motion to approve our minutes from October 28th, please? I'll motion to approve. Thanks, Alicia. Got a second for me?
I'll second.
Any comments or corrections to the minutes from October 28th? All those in favor of approving our minutes from October 28th, please say aye.
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 We have our approved minutes. Great, thank you. Okay, we now move on to public comment. Member of the public, hi Brandy. Would you like to make a comment? And if so, please state your name and town of residence.
Brandy Goodrich, Calhoun, Vermont, and I had a personnel issue, which I understand isn't really a public comment.
I, and I believe, Brandy, my name's Matt Foster. I think I understand what you would like to speak to, and I'd like to set up a time to discuss with you first, because before it would go to the board, it goes through me first, so I see if I can provide resolution, any concerns or problems before it needs to go to the board. So I'll be.
I understand that.
Okay.
My, my process for coming to was that it felt like it was a very big issue that everyone should be aware of. And if you want me to like email you first and then go through this whole thing, I can.
I'd just like to talk with you.
But I just think that it was important enough to come. Like, this is the first school board meeting I've ever been to.
Sure.
And I've lived in the town my whole life.
Yep.
So I wouldn't come if I didn't think it was important. But if you want me to like go through a different thing, well.
You know, I believe it's extremely important. That's why I'd like to meet with you personally. And then if you and I cannot come to a resolution, which I hope that I've already started work on one with the principal, then I would encourage you to go ahead and speak with Ellen and the rest of the board at that time.
The only like comment I have to you right now.
Sure.
Is detrimental that this gets solved immediately.
And I'd be happy to talk with you, even if you want me to step outside right now as the, the budget process were to take place, I'd be happy to step out when you even start the process now.
Sure.
Okay.
Brandy, I do just also want to let you know, part of the reason why it's not appropriate for the board to hear it at this point is because if it does come to a point where the board, the board could need to hear it in a quasi judicial role. And so it's better for us not to be involved at this level in case we do have to make some sort of judgment later. And but I understand that this is important, and I know that Matt will give it his full attention. And then if it comes to us, if it does need to come to us at a, at a later date, it will be something that you will put on the agenda.
I really do.
Yep.
I really, really do.
Thank you.
Well, I, I hope that it's does it's appropriate, but I hope that you can go with the resolution that with Matt. He is the person that can make change.
I'll be, I'll be right out. I'm gonna, I'm giving the control over to Mike right now. So that's the budget document. That's a budget document. And if we need to share.
But Brandy, we're always, we're always happy to.
Just wanted to show you the ones that we got there. I got them all ready to go whichever. And I'm gonna take old fashioned paper, I think. Mike, then just record.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
So we'll just note that Matt has stepped out. Any other public to be heard from? Hearing none. We will move on to reports. Matt has stepped out, so perhaps he'll put his superintendent report last if he has anything to add to it when he gets back.
Fine.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have another copy?
Sure.
Um, so my report for this month, I put in a lot of celebrations, so hopefully you enjoy those. We had a great, we had one of our students get picked for the legislative page, which is really exciting. Jennifer did an amazing audit of all of our flawless books, so it was amazing. We had Natalie Kinsey Warnock here this past week. Dan Bilchmanfield and I are working really working on tobacco and trying to figure out preventive measures as well. And we're gearing up for our harvest meal tomorrow, weather depending now, it seems. So another update to the boiler piece. So the boiler was started up on Thursday of last week to do the curing process. On Friday, they brought it up to full heat, and it stayed on, which is lovely. So at this point, Rick is going to be possibly doing some training with Matt Fulburn on Tuesday, and actually, sorry, on Friday. So then all the custodians will have the training to run our facilities and our boiler system tasks. Absolutely. I'm very excited to report, we have three potential parent educators that are looking for a position here. So I'm going to be meeting with them hopefully tomorrow, if not Monday. I'm going to return after the holidays. So very excited to see what other potential people we could have in our building, maybe even as substitutes as well. Unfortunately, we had vandalism done to our main building of our school and on our school bus. Which is kind of warranting us to get some more cameras in locations that are not seen as easily. So we're working on getting some more cameras as well. So that is my report. Yep, and those students are doing repair now. Repair work. Yep, so, which is nice.
That's a nice little student report as well.
Yeah, it's very exciting. So in, actually, in Ian's class where they're doing their podcasts, students are starting to write to the paper as well. And so I thought that would be a good opportunity to come and add into our student report for our updates for the participants. They are doing a lot of really great stuff. They have the Christmas market coming up real soon. They're gonna be doing the homemade, so, which is really fun for the chemistry cleaning class that they're working on for Project Studios. We are gearing up for another nice, fun spirit week over towards Christmas holiday. It won't be wrapped around Christmas, but we're starting to do something different. The kids really love our spirit week around the Halloween break. At that time, so it was really nice for them.
Wow, and will there be room for everybody for the harvest meal tomorrow? It's like that's gonna be a private cafeteria.
We're not. It was not gonna be the cafeteria, it'll be in the gym.
Okay.
Um, we are trying to make sure we have enough tables. There might be a little standing room only, maybe, but we're very excited to see how, you know, just the growth of having our community around and supporting our kids as well as our teachers. So that will be a really fun event. And if we need to get more tables, we'll go upstairs and find somewhere, I guess. But we will, we, we should have enough time to get everything ready for tomorrow's event.
Any questions from the group for Jennifer? All right. We had our student services report, and so if anybody has questions for Matt, we can wait for them to get back unless.
I'm happy to answer any questions or providing additional updates to this report as well. On, on the, on the superintendent's report, you'll, you know, if you got a chance to read it or not, but in there, Matt put a piece about pursuing a BREC grant, Community Schools Grant. We are, we've done some initial kind of information seeking about that grant potential. And we did learn that one of the requirements, if we were to get this grant, would be to have a community schools coordinator at the SU level. So just considering what the cost of a full-time employee might be, that might cut into how much grant award we actually get to be able to provide professional development. So we're asking for some clarity around the requirements of that grant. So more to follow on that. Let's see, what else is here? We have the piece from Dez and Je, Dez Hertz and Jen Lemery about Act 139 and our literacy, our literacy work. Been trying to really think about the intentionality of how we communicate to families about how students are making progress with their, you know, acquisition of literacy skills. So we are planning to do some more work with principals at an upcoming leadership team meeting about how we're notifying those students who are in need of urgent intervention. A lot of times, those students that need urgent intervention and literacy instruction are already on IEPs. So we already know that we're working with, you know, with our special educators and our instructional leaders and teachers on trying to provide support to those students. So notifying them again of a, of an assessment result doesn't really seem to make sense when we're constantly providing progress monitoring updates. So really trying to figure out, you know, how do we communicate the messaging around how students are making progress without making it feel like, oh, this is just another thing that is saying that my kid's struggling, right? So really want to be intentional about that.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Let's see, there's a bit there about negotiations. I think that's pretty, there's nothing new there. Mr. Conchesi is gonna do some, some budget work with us in a little bit. We have our human, our HR update from Michael Frieda. There's nothing major there. Same with the tech from Scott. And then for me, with the, with my, my report there, the strategic planning meeting happened last, last Wednesday was our first meeting at the Danville Town Hall. We had forty-five, forty-six participants. Four from Calhoun. And so that, just to give you a makeup of the forty-five, it was our CCSU leadership team, so the principals and the directors of the central office. There was roughly about fifteen of us. And then we had twenty-eight or so community members across the seven, seven schools. So roughly about four or five per, per school. We had four or five students. I think one of the things that was really interesting with the feedback from, you know, from that first meeting was, we need more students involved, because this is their education, their future that we're talking about. So how do we incorporate more of that voice or their voice into this, this process? The, the topic for this first meeting was really about, what is the future of our world? And how do we, how do we start to think about the students that are in our classrooms now and the students we don't yet have, and providing them with a great educational experience that allows them to be able to go out into the world and pursue these, these new types of jobs that we may not even know exist yet. So, so it was really a lot of that futurist thinking. And our next meeting is on December third. Back in the town, the Danville Town Hall, and this topic will be more focused on, you know, that vision. What, so what is the vision? And then, and that kind of nuts and bolts of how do we get there?
Also, four to seven on the.
Four to seven, yeah. Tanika, our food services director, had made a great meal for, for everyone at dinner. Her and Emily helped, helped out. And a couple of different pastas, lasagnas, salads. Tasto from the Beecham School with their microgreens that they've been growing. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty nice.
Is there any chance of sort of getting the notes from that strategic planning group disseminated more broadly, so people?
Yeah, yeah. We talked about, you know, we don't want this done in secret, right? We want people to be actively in the know of what, what is happening. So we are planning on sending out some notes and some updates to the broader community.
I don't know if this probably does, this is probably a different kind of thing, because it's not like a, it's not a board subcommittee, so you don't have to. But yeah, transparency would be nice.
Yeah, yeah.
See what people are talking about.
Yeah.
Thanks. Any questions for Mike? Erica, go for it.
Hey, just a little off to the side. I know before the school year started, we had just acquired, just had Dr. Blake join us. We were talking about the, how the goal was to have a supervisory wide rubric for behavioral, and I hesitate to use the word disciplinary, but I think you know what I'm getting at. And I was just wondering if there was any further news on that front?
The one common thing that we're working on right now is making sure that all of our schools are inputting their discipline referral data into one system, so that we can start to look at how people are reflecting minor and major behavior referrals, so that we can then do that work towards the end of the year of having one common set of guidelines for behavior. We also, our MTSS coordinator Martha DeMares is doing a lot of that work as well with PBIS and things like that. So definitely more to come. We are at our last, our last Calhoun meeting, if I, when Dez was here, she showed some of that referral data. So those reports are happening for all schools. And we are looking at them as a leadership team, so that we are having these conversations about thinking down the line, what are those common behavioral expectations that we should be, you know, using across all of our schools?
Okay, cool. Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Mike. Now we get to turn it over to the next one.
Fantastic. All right. So I want to first, you know, actually, maybe we start the budget process with the SU. A lot of the boards I, I serve, they like to talk about the SU first, and then we work our way to the local district. And I say that because many things that the SU does, you know, when you back away all of reimbursements, that net cost has to be distributed. If we can't carry deficits and we can't carry surpluses, we have to liquidate all those numbers back to the district. So if you could all be so kind as to go to pages, I think it just starts with a visual walk through the fiscal twenty-six SU budget. I know it's in October, but that's when we presented to the SU board, so that's, that's where that comes from. Okay. I do realize that some of these slide pages are cut off, but we'll focus on the pages that have information that I think will be helpful. All right, look, the SU is a big institution, right? It's, it's a fourteen million dollar institution. We do a lot of things. Pay a lot of bills, a lot of it statutory, you know, food service, transportation, special education. Working in development, the list goes on. We pay bills, right? And we, we do a lot of things. Every dollar that, that the SU receives is going to be one of two ways. It's gonna be reimbursement from the state or the feds, or it's gonna be from the school districts themselves. That's in the form of an assessment. Yeah. So at the end of the day, at the end of each year, when we build a budget, we wait for the actuals to come through, and then I'll do a reconciliation at the end of the year to say, how did those actuals compare to the budget? Well, it is, how does that compare to the assessment that I built you, which is that net after reimbursement cost from the state, feds, and grants and all that? If there's money left over, if I charged too much, everybody gets the refunds proportionally speaking. If I didn't charge enough, unfortunately, that's when I have to hand out invoices, say, unfortunately, I undercharged it. And usually where that will occur most commonly will be special education. New kids will move in, new needs are identified. We can either handle it inside the school district and at the SU level, or we can't, and we have to provide third-party services, and that's when costs start to add up. Okay. So look, at the highest level, you know, forty-five percent of the SU budget is based on funds directly received from, from the state, and it actually never, never show up on your, on your school district level budgets, right? Because we manage it at the SU level, we get reimbursed for certain things, and then that's about forty-five percent, and the remaining fifty-five percent is then invoiced out in the form of an assessment. And I will say this here, I'm on a school board as well, believe it or not. You know, serving six wasn't enough. I serve like you guys do. And believe it or not, not everybody does it the way we do it. And I, and I'm proud of that, actually. I, I'm on a, my local community board and an SU board, where when it comes to sharing costs, they pool everything. Nothing is site-specific. And then they do it by, you know, it's, now we finally got them to gravitate towards enrollment. Before that, it was, it was equalized pupil. And they wanted, they moved it to long-term weighted average ADM. And why that's a flawed concept is, if you've got towns that tuition out, those kids are already paying SU costs at the school they're at. Because those schools provide all the things that we do as an SU. So those tuitioned-out kids would be double paying. We don't do that here. I'm proud of that, right? And I'm proud of the fact that the only thing that we really share that we allocate out to all of you, all the districts, is non-site specific. So like, the superintendent's office, my office, curriculum development, IT, those only shared administrative responsibilities. And then divvied out what I think is a fair formula, which is, I think it's fifty percent employees, a staff, teachers, whatever, and fifty percent students. And why that matters is that we're a transaction-based organization. The more transactions and people, the, the more cost it is. So it's the right way to do it. That's why I bring this up. In, I can't imagine districts having to share everything, transportation, food service, and special education, if you can imagine that, on a purely enrollment-based, it just doesn't make sense. So anyway, I, I share that because I'm trying to move my district that way. I'm lucky to get enrolled.
Please. Okay, so food, but food service falls under that, but that's still site, like every site has its own food service, right?
It is. A very, very small percentage of food service is allocated out. It's basically Tanika and Emily.
Okay.
And that's it. Because they're district-wide resources for you guys, right?
And then my other question was on vocational transportation, because we go to a different tech center than the rest of the SU, right?
No.
No?
You go to the same ones at Twin Falls and Circuits. Yes, yes, they do.
So how does that work? Do we get paid, do we like pay through the SU budget, but then do we also have to pay transportation to our regional tech center? Or do we just pay it one?
Sure. So, so let's, let's just back up. So transportation, non-tech is done through historical spend. So it's like a, in previous years, actuals, you get like forty-six cents on the dollar, something like that. For tech, it's based on the miles that your buses are driving to and from. So Twin Falls and Calhoun have a pooled approach. Some cases, using Cabot, transportation, buses, or whatever, people.
Car.
The car, which is example. In other cases, Twin Falls using the bus to pick up and bring everybody back. So when I fill out the tech reimbursement template, I am literally doing it by day, by run, how many miles, who's getting picked up, where those kids live. So it's very in-depth. So yes, you get a portion, you get a portion of the tech center reimbursement. It's small, but it helps. Helps lower the cost. Yeah, okay.
Mike, you want to present anything?
Yeah, if you could pull up, I think it's in the package. Do you have access to that package?
Yeah.
That maybe you should pull up. It's got, I think it's got the whole.
Yeah. It should be. It was sent down to twenty seconds by decade, and give me a quarter of you.
No, I'm just pulling it up.
I can send it to you real quick. There it is, right there.
Visual walk, right?
You got it. That's it. Perfect. Yep. All right. So we're basically on slide three at this point. Unless there's any other questions on the second slide. All right. So here's the SU budget that got approved at the board level. Could you?
Yep. I'm wicked smart, Mike.
Wicked. Thirteen-nine rounded. That's a total budget. On behalf, meaning we get reimbursed for, is a little over six. The rest of this, seven point, almost eight, is what, what's getting assessed at the school district level. And I'll break all that down in a second. That's the highest level. Or the next one, please.
No, no.
If you could blow that one off a little, it'd be helpful. So what you see there, obviously, is that split. And again, the on behalf never shows up, because it's all consolidated at the SU level. And then what gets assessed out, that's the assessment totaled by district. And I'll go into what makes up those dollar values by assessment category. All right, good. Next slide. All right. Special education is by far the lion's share of what we spend at the SU level. All right. Of that thirteen-nine, I think the page showed before, it's, it's like almost ten million is special education. It's nine-something. I don't have the exact.
It's incredible.
It is incredible. Well, because, you know, we have, children have needs. We have to service those needs. We can't do it in general ed. We gotta do it in special ed. And I'll tell you right now, inflation is just crazy. These both, third-party services, but especially transportation. If anything ever happens to me in the role I'm in, I know exactly what business I'm opening up in the immediate future, and that will be transportation services for special education. There's a huge, huge demand and not enough supply. Anyway, getting back to this, so we get revenues in two forms. The census, census block grant is new, new in the sense of Act 173, which is only like two years old. Prior to that, there was some grant money, but it really was modeled on whatever you didn't get reimbursed from, the state would pay like fifty-six cents on the dollar. Now the state is saying, no more. You guys got to get more efficient, better with how you do things, managing the limited resources that you have. So now the census block grant is, is an amount that it's actually going down steadily by about a hundred thousand dollars a year over the last three years.
Across the SU?
Across everybody. But yes, our.
Hundred grand across the SU is decreasing.
Yeah. So for example, let's say three years ago, the census block grant started out at like three point six. Last, last year was three point five. This year is three point four. It just keeps going down. That's it. Get less and less. What the state did do to counter that is to say, look, for extraordinary reimbursement, for the, the children who have higher needs, higher than say sixty-eight thousand dollars a year in a plethora of different services, no matter how it comes, it could be third-party, it could be one-on-one teachers, not a bad example, one-on-one parent, it could be transportation costs, could be a combination, anything, of all three. They, what they're saying is, look, we know we're giving you less and less general help, but where you have higher-need children, we're gonna make sure that you don't absorb as much. So that's where some of that makeup for the census block grant is going away. So it, it's just the state's approach to saying, we understand, we're doing the best we can. All right.
Yes, please. Because, Michael, not to get too far off on exit ramp here, how does the state determine the block grant?
So it's.
Decreasing by a hundred grand a year, but.
Based on a two-year.
What metrics do they use?
Two-year spend and the number of students. In, that gets calculated on a per-student basis. So we have declining enrollment overall, and enrollment is only going down in many schools, but also.
Overall enrollment, not special ed enrollment, overall enrollment for the school.
I believe it's overall enrollment, yes. It's not based on the case of IEPs. Correct, correct. And so if, 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 as the spend keeps going down, in theory, divided by that number of students, hell, even if the spend would remain the same, divided by less students, you're gonna get a per-student cost. Hell, even if the spend would remain the same, divided by less students, you're going to get a per student cost essentially less. So that's how.
Overall student numbers rather than the sped, uh, IEP numbers.
Correct, correct. But how I divvy up the grant is absolutely based on the number of IEPs. I don't get, I don't get caught in the details of, well, some of the students in Cabot versus Twinfield, they might, I don't do that. I said, look, if there's a total pool of a hundred fifty, and I make this up, and Cabot's got fifteen. I'm giving them ten percent of the block grant. And that's, that's not real, I'm just giving you that. But that's not the real number, right?
So is the hundred grand, uh, a year decrease because the overall number of our kids in our SU is decreasing at, at a gradual level?
Gradually.
If we were flatlining our number of kids, we would not have that drop by a hundred grand.
I, I wouldn't be as much. It would absolutely not be.
Just trying to figure out whether they're generally squeezing or just squeeze it harder because you're losing kids.
We're going to show you a three year trend here in a few minutes. And I think where you'll see it's getting made up is on the extraordinary. So we're getting less on the block grant, but we're getting more on the extraordinary to almost create almost like a cost neutral. Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to explain the.
Sounds like a decrease is partly built in, but partly resulting from our decrease number of kids.
It is. That is absolutely, and, and, and the historical spend, it's a combination of both. Okay. All right. So the difference between what the state gives us, what's actually spent is part of that assessment. We'll get into that in a few minutes when I show you the totals. Yeah, and, and we're good. This just goes to show you what it was before. So before Act one seventy three, we were reimbursed fifty six cents on the dollar. I'm saying now that's zero. We now get a block grant, it's fixed, and we talked about how extraordinary is. And the total net spend that gets divvied out to all the districts. The special education is four million. So five, about five is reimbursed-ish, and four is left over. That we have to divvy out. And again, the only shared is very, very little. Everything is site specific, district specific. The only share is the unreimbursed grant cost of both Ally and Vicki, which is like a point two FTE. It's remarkable. How we do it here compared to other districts. It's a block grant. It shouldn't say MS, it should say CBG, census block grant. And it used to be the original one, was the old one. I should change that. Thank you for noting that. All right. So everybody said we had about a net, a net assessment total, a little over four million. There's your breakout by district after all reimbursements and the responsibility of each district. You'll see a decrease across all the districts, except for.
So that means we're getting money back?
No, it just means your assessment this year is a little bit less. I mean, it's, it's basically flat. And we're going to show you the three year trend in a minute. So it's not very much. And here's your assessment breakdown for all, uh, the districts. All right. So Twinfield, I'm sorry, Cabot is down thirty three thousand for the general fund. Plus almost nineteen for food service. And we'll get into all that, uh, in a few minutes. But that is your net twenty six, and these differences here compared to twenty five. Fund one is up here, and this is fund six. So that's your differential. So last year was one twenty, now it's one oh three. And this is, was one, you know, one million three hundred thirty three thousand last year, so it's, it's thirty two.
That's the amount we have to pay to our, to yes, to Cabot based.
Yes, so technically your, your assessments are down over fifty thousand.
That's a good.
It's a great thing. I've never been able to give this board good news in my five years, and I feel like I'm finally giving it. Feel free to go, yeah. You know, Jennifer's here now, so hopefully we'll get some good things going. All right. So this is all good news. I wanted to share this because I, I haven't had a lot of it over the years. But just, just as a whole, hold on before you jump. I'm, I have never seen this before. You see this one ninety five, that all assessments are down. One ninety five compared to the previous years. I, I have shown nothing but a steady increase from this SU. And this is my fifth year. What's driving that, you might ask? Well, I will say this. Mike, entire directors of special education, though, be Vicki and Ally, along with all of the principals, had to make some really tough decisions. They, they decided, look, we're not just going to backfill for the sake of backfilling, especially when it comes to special education resources. We're going to look at the number of IEP students. We're going to look at caseloads. We're going to make sure that we're, we're resource appropriately staffed, make sure everybody's working. You know, as proportionally speaking to the guidelines set by the AOE and by the child's needs. The point is this, this is great news. I would say, I think it was eleven. FTE equivalents were reduced at the SU level across all of the districts for special education. Led by Danville and Gell Coop, they had the most reduction.
Whole numbers of special ed staff reduced by eleven.
Which is, what's, which is, well, if you think about it, of this one ninety five, one forty seven of it's coming out of special education. From an assessment standpoint. That's not directly proportional to the savings, of course, but that is the assessment savings, unreimbursed costs. So this is, this is tremendous news. I've never been able to show, um, yeah, and then anything like this. So the net impact, even with, even with food service being up as high as it is, it's one twenty nine, one twenty nine from last year. It's up dramatically higher, but it is higher. We're still saving sixty six because one ninety five minus the one twenty nine is sixty six thousand. So you're, 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 actually, wait, sorry, wait, fun difference from twenty five. Wait, uh, let me think about this. We're down one ninety five here. Yeah, and we're up one twenty nine here, and the net difference is the sixty six. We're still down sixty six thousand, even with food service being up. And food service, you've been in the grocery store. I don't think I need to go any further. And that's a combination of the CBA wages for the support staff that are helping feed our children, right? Benefits are up, healthcare's up twelve point nine percent. And eleven point nine, two hundred percent, sorry, eleven point nine, twelve percent. And then obviously inflation is everywhere with food, milk. Pick an item, doesn't matter. And some of our schools need repairs. You know, could be walk-in freezers, walk-in refrigerators, whatever. That's why you see food service up so much this year. Okay.
We have to cut special educators at this school too, you know?
Very little. I think it was a point five reduction. Because IEP caseloads and, and number of students and workloads and caseloads did not allow us that opportunity. So it was very little.
A small reduction.
Very small.
And that doesn't necessarily mean that somebody is, who's actively working here is losing point five, right? It could just be that we had point five that traditionally had been backfilled, like Mike was saying, that we don't, no longer need to do that. Because we have, we have all of the services that we need to provide in place.
Yeah. Look, and, and this is an estimate, based on information we have today. If we get a new family that moves in, guess what? We're going to provide the, the neat, the services and the, the student needs. So, you know, here I am, here we all are, building the budget as best we can, change in a heartbeat, right? It just happens. So, anyway.
We had, I mean, just, uh, just to pump it up a little more, Mike, last year we were looking at a budget with two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars increase. Special education costs. And this year we have a drop of, you said, twenty or thirty?
Special.
Thirty three.
Thirty three total.
Oh, yes, all right.
Great news. I, I, again, I've never been able to give this board good news, I feel like. So I'm really happy for this.
Even if it was a lesser increase, it would be good news. Two thirty two.
That was just, that was total or just special ed? Yeah.
That was a big chunk of the, uh, the swallow.
It was, and, but a whole extra hundred thousand was because of a re, a new teacher that. All right. All right. Let's go to the final, last page of the SU. So even within the SU, I try to give you a breakout of everything, right? So if you go to Cabot, right? So resource wise, you know, and, and dollar spend, and then even within the district wide. I try to break it out by the category that it belongs in, you know, like I said, Mike and Matt's office, my office. We have a new facility director position, um, that has to be district wide. But I don't want you to fear, Cabot doesn't lose their facility director. They're just going to have to share. That facility director district wide. That's it. And I think the only way that's going to happen, I know you're looking at me funny, Ellen, and that's okay. I know you do. We do too. We're, we're really happy. Right, right.
Overworked and all of a sudden.
Yeah, but the only way I think this makes sense, and I talked to, to, to both Mike and Matt about this, is that we've got to make sure we have the right people. On site to pull this off. So we're going to be doing an in-depth dive based on all the different buildings that we have to take care of. Make sure we've got a leader, you know, a, 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 um, facilities manager, if you will. That willing to take that role and that would allow the facility director role to be that level, to be able to go to multiple schools. And do that and serve the needs that the AOE and the state of Vermont is enforcing on us.
So our facilities guy is now the SU facilities director?
Not yet. Twenty six. Yes.
So will we have still budgeted for an onsite facilities person?
Yes. Oh, my God, yes.
Okay, and, and our, like Sean?
No, it's now Brandon. Previously.
Okay, so Brandon is on board with this, like he's.
Well, we're working on that. We're working on that. I don't want to, uh, I don't want to show the cards yet, but we are working hard to see.
Get him to see if it's something that he.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think he's definitely potentially open to it. But based on what I just shared earlier, you've got to have the right people in the right seats to even pull that off. And that has to be true, not just at one school, but at all seven buildings that we manage a, a, as a district.
So people aside, that would be the plan.
That is the vision.
Let's take people names out of it.
Correct.
We would have an SU facility director, which we don't currently have.
We don't.
And we will still have our Cabot facilities manager.
A leader at the, at the school that could take that role on, that would allow, but you currently have to serve more schools. Does that make sense?
We did have, Mr. McNamara was the SU wide facilities director, no?
He had the same exact role that Brandon has now.
Which is, which school?
Forty percent of Danville, forty percent of Twinfield, twenty percent of Cab.
So the three K through twelve schools was his domain, not SU wide.
Correct.
Okay, and so Brandon is doing the same job that Sean did, but you're looking at somebody to do all seven schools.
Well, it's because we're being told we have to. Lovely state of Vermont gives us another funded state mandate.
Yeah, you have SU wide facilities director, not just three K through twelve schools, the whole, whole deal.
Do you know anybody? Change their, change their mind, let us know. Yeah, it's been, it's been a point of contentiousness from not just, you know, ma- many districts are very upset by this. Because there's some that says, why, why are you mandating something that I don't need? Anyway, okay, don't shoot the messenger, uh, just delivering the message.
And we get asked by, you know.
Of course, it's good for you to know this. Yeah, yeah. So, so, so the increase really, I know it looks like we're adding a full-time FTE here, but that's really not true. It's a kind of reallocation of a, of a one oh, point four from Cabot, that's up from Twin, uh, Twinfield and Danville, and point two from Cabot. So it's kind of a shuffle, whereas those FTE counts were at the district level. Now they're being pulled out of the district level and put up at the SU level. It's kind of like funny math. Okay.
That, that includes this new, uh, SU wide director, the one oh in green.
It, it does. That nineteen point four includes that one oh, that's your exact.
I guess we got to ask one more question. If we have a school level leader, will that, will that just be, um, it's already in the budget? Brandon is already serving that role. Brandon or somebody else might do.
Correct. We, we're trying to identify a high pot, I call it, high potential.
Okay.
Current candidate that could take on that role.
Okay.
Yes. Almost like a promotion.
Okay, yeah.
That's private sector talk, high potential, like if I'm the private sector. Anyway.
Which private sector?
Not the candidate side, I'm talking about, you know, anyway. All right. Any questions so far on the SU? Although we'll get right to Cabot.
So you want me to X out of this?
We can X out of that and get into the, actually, Cabot's fiscal.
Which, which one are you looking at?
Second PDF. I would go right next to the visual one. Yeah, right there, that'd be perfect. But I have to say, uh, I drew, we threw Jennifer, Dr. Blake, if you go right into the fire. And she came out just like a phoenix out of the fire. That's great work. Yeah, great work. Um, yeah, and I'll be honest, this is, I, I don't know if you guys have seen this yet, and actually had any, we're looking at a flat. Budget. Only sure that sinks in. I've never been able to present Cabot with nothing but increases for five years. This is flat from last year. When you think about all the things that are baked in here, right? We have collective bargaining agreement increases, the teachers' support staff, we've got healthcare increases of twelve percent. One of the things that's helping is assessments are down by fifty thousand, right? All right, that's helpful. We don't have a deficit anymore. We're finally out of the deficit. Three year note, and it's done in twenty five.
I know, I wish you'd warned us a little bit. We could have brought, you know, pizza or, you know.
Took Ellen's advice and she says, I want to be able to budget, even for small dollars, in the development of my school board. For professional training and develop, I mean, we've got what I was, things that have been missing for years in this budget. And we're still flat. So I feel like for the first time. We've got a budget that we can actually do something with, and we're not shaving the skin off the bone here. Or not budgeting things that we need. We, we actually were able to increase some of the maintenance repairs in the facility. It, it just, I, I, okay, this is the highest level. It, it is. And so we'll get into all this. What, here's your, here's your just summary by function code. Okay, you see some increases and decreases across the board, right? Yeah, I will say this, the twenty five budget, I want to, I want to. In the twenty five budget, there is a debt service line of about fifty thousand dollars. Because a year ago around this time, we were going to reconfigure this campus. We know that's probably been pushed down into twenty six now. We know that. Nothing's really good, probably going to happen before the end of the school year.
Well, we're not reconfiguring the campus. Going to go to the town to ask them to reuse, use that borrowing.
Right. And that's what that fifty thousand, so the fifty thousand was intended for a certain purpose. It will help because what I thought was going to be a hundred thousand dollar deficit at the end of twenty four in totality. Ended up being a hundred and twenty. So it was off by about twenty thousand. Why? Because the boiler didn't work. And now we know the boiler, based on Jen, Jennifer's report, it's up and running, and it's going to be usable this winter. That's going to save us money because we're going to be burning biomass, wood chips, and not that dirty fuel oil. So, which is more expensive. All right.
You're baking those savings into the twenty six budget.
What I'm saying is, yes, that's why I'm not going to put, we don't need to have another deficit line in there.
Right.
The, the fifty thousand that we're not spending on the configuration will help offset the fact that my prior year deficit was a little underestimated. Because I didn't, I didn't know how twenty four was going to end when I built the budget, right? Because I had to build the budget a whole year before the year was over. So it's just complicated. So I feel good that twenty five is in a good place. And I'm really excited about twenty six.
Now, that's great news. And I have a question for you. At the BSPA conference, you might remember, we sat at a table. And there was talk about rainy day funds, and somebody from Twin, a board member from Twinfields said something, and you said, yeah, the rainy day fund. And I said, do we have, and you quickly said, no, not you, Cabot, you don't have a rainy day. Do we need to start, now that we're in a good place, do we start building a rainy day fund? All the other schools have rainy day funds and we have not.
No, they don't, they don't all do have. Peachum does not.
I just thought the little left out.
Well, so thi- this year, at the end of twenty five, we could very well have make of a something. Thirty, maybe forty thousand potentially in circles. It just depends upon any, um, unanticipated emergencies that pop up. I say that because the delta of that fifty that originally was put into debt service. Minus that extra twenty, that could leave as much as thirty thousand, could. If, 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 if the collective Cabot team led by Jennifer nails the budget this year from a spend perspective. With the exception of that, we could see thirty thousand, long as there's no other unanticipated repairs being done or emergencies or whatever.
Do we need something that says that if there is a, some leftover that then becomes a rainy day fund or?
To the board's discretion. So I believe it's in your. are the articles?
The warning.
In the warning, there are articles. One of the articles states that if there is a surplus, it's to be used at the board's discretion. I believe it's something like that.
I remember, yeah.
Yeah, we could easily put that thirty thousand back into the capital fund, which we took from at one point.
I mean, that's what a rainy day fund would probably be useful, rainy day.
Right, Article ten.
Yeah.
Shall the whole audit fund balance to be, be used in a reserve fund, to be extended in the control and direction of the Cavett Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't know what number it was, but I knew it was in.
It's in old Article ten.
You don't.
So hopefully.
So we'll be good. I think, I think you'll get your wish, I think we, I would love to see a little bit of a surplus, and I would love to then make the recommendation to you if that is a true statement, that we put it back into the capital fund that we that we needed to use based on work that had to get done. That's it, all right. If, Mike, sorry, if you don't mind, scroll down, this is the highest level, hold on. This is, so the first up top was all function code, this is by object code, which is a different way to split it. All right, which is salary versus benefits versus third-party services. All right. Scroll a little bit further down. This is the detail by function, okay, which is direct education, which is the eleven oh one, right, versus pre-K instruction. So I mean, I can spend as much time as you want on this, or i- if it's more helpful, we can just scroll right through it, and if you have questions, fire away.
So we don't have contracts yet for next year, right? We've got some work done, our teachers, so how are you budgeting for those salaries?
I made an estimation, and I.
Best you can do, right?
That's all I can do, based on the information that I have, and based on where I think we might land. If I'm wrong, that would have an impact on the budget, good or bad, depending upon how bad it was or good it was.
Okay, I was just wondering what.
Yes.
So you take your best guess, which is what a lot of.
Exactly right, yeah, that's good.
Mike, I hate that, can I just stop you for a second? I'm just jumping up at me, the, uh, you know, the, the big parentheses on the object budget at the bottom is debt service and food service transfer down by two hundred and fourteen.
Yep.
Um, can you just amplify what was in there? Because that's our, that's our saving grace in this case. Everything else is up a little bit, and that's just dropped by quarter million dollars almost.
Right there.
Right, that's one.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to the, I, I have my minutia, which.
If somebody asks, how did you do it? That would be our answer, right?
Right.
Yeah, we, we didn't really, uh, it was not sort of cutting away at skin or bone or muscle.
No.
It was something that was a bigger cost is suddenly not there.
Sure. So let's start with, of that two fourteen, the first number that, that's important to note, is a hundred thousand is because we're not anticipating a deficit in twenty-five. It was a hundred thousand dollar deficit line, not the loan from having to clean up the books from all that other, that's a separation. We'll get to that in a minute. No, no, you were here when we did this, and I, it, it, I know.
Remember that.
It was awful, right?
It was ugly.
It was ugly, but that is part of it too, but I'm doing the first part first. Hundred thousand was because the boiler was down for two years.
Okay.
The first deficit was from twenty-three, caused by the, by the boiler being down. And then I anticipated, so let's call that a sixty thousand dollar deficit from twenty-three. Then in twenty-four, as I'm building budget for twenty-five, I'm in twenty-four, and I'm like, well, it's looking like it's gonna be another forty, so I said sixteen forty is a hundred. Well, then there being like another sixty. So I was off by twenty, but so that's where that comes from. The first hundred thousand of that two, two fifteen is because we're gonna have a working boiler very soon.
No more of the budgeting for extra fuel costs.
Right.
Okay.
That's number one. Then, number two.
No woodchips, yeah.
Okay, we did the cleanup. When I got, when I got here, I think I nick, I got a nickname from Rory, and I won't forget, he called me the Grim Reaper of Numbers. But that cleanup that we had to do, based on running annual deficits and food service and not addressing them, when they shut down Washington Northeast, it was like a three hundred thousand dollar cumulative debt.
We had to go do a special meeting to warn, to be able to borrow that money.
That's why I looked at you that way, because this is a gift, right?
It was like a call.
No, it wasn't, I just mean, it just brings back a lot of bad memories for a lot of people.
I had a lot of questions. Believe it or not, I had a lot of questions about it back then.
Cool, we had to go to the Pacific Bank, we had to get it, because deficit notes, you're only allowed, I would have loved to drag that out longer, but the statute says three years is your max, so, so ninety, ninety-six thousand is because of that. Uh, of the deficit loan no longer being needed, so that's one ninety-six of your two fifteen.
Yeah.
And then obviously, I think, some of that's also, uh, interest, so that's your lion's share.
Yeah.
Those two things.
Great. So getting past some, uh, some paperwork, uh, issues from Washington Northeast and no longer having to buy fuel oil. Made up two hundred grand.
Really?
Awesome. It's, it's great.
Yeah.
Good news, we're gonna have to have a new nickname for you.
I love to shake that nickname, I hated that thing.
Nicknames.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thanks.
Yes, you're welcome. All right, um, so, so look, I, unless you, if you haven't saw me, I recommend going through all the minutia. You can go by, by function area, by object code, like you can scroll right down. I mean, it breaks every category down uh, for you guys. I, I mean, I'm happy if you got questions here, and, and you can have questions at the next meeting. You can just look at this at your leisure. But this is the breakout of how we get to all those totals, broken up by these different categories, pre-K, special education, et cetera, et cetera.
So I have a question, but you might not have the answer yet.
Okay.
I was on a conference call with other school board people through the S P A, and it was brought up about the exit, that again, the excess spending threshold was back. And somebody said, it wasn't like a V S B A person, but I heard from his business manager at their meeting, that the excess spending threshold they thought was gonna be set at sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-six, which is that sort of.
Sounds about right.
Per, you know, per.
Per pupil.
Right. Do we know our per pupil cost yet?
No.
Are we, because will we not know that until we get something from the state, the December number? Is that what we're waiting for?
We're waiting on a lot of numbers.
Okay.
But the number that's gonna help you understand what your cost per pupil will be, is when the long-term weighted average A D M numbers are released, because that'll take your total cost, and I'll divide it by that number to see if you're in the penalty. So I, at this point, just to be clear, I wish I could give you any kind of tax information, I can't, it'll be sometime in early this month, December-ish, when the numbers come out, and we can always move our normal, what is it, the fourth Monday in every month, you guys?
We usually do an extra meeting because of budget to kind of.
Good. So when the numbers are out, I'm happy to compile them, and we can have an effective tax rate meeting. At this point, the object of this meeting for me and for all of us today is just to talk about, what do we see? Based on the needs that Jennifer and I built together, right, on her team and the S U, that's what we're trying to give you guys. It's just an early glimpse of how are we looking? And I have never been this excited for Cavett in my five years.
Good luck on the board.
You must stay now.
Yeah. Thank you. We've got some good, new people doing this, good news, and Mike too, and Matt too.
That's right.
New people energy, good.
Yeah.
And, well, last year for people was something in the thirteen thousand range, right, so hopefully we'll be still going along that sixteen thousand.
We should be okay, unless we've had a, a significant decline.
But we've had an increase.
So we should be in great shape. I don't anticipate being the penalty at all. There are other districts that we manage that are absolutely gonna be on that fringe, and that's gonna be some tough decisions. Yep, but we won't get into that now.
Well, when our community has not passed the budget in the past, it has generally been because we've been over the penalty threshold, so it's, it's great to be able to tell people that a lot applied.
For the penalty, but we still have other things to face, like, uh, yield rates.
Right. We don't know yet.
We don't know how that's gonna impact the tax rate, but you're right, this is a good start.
Yeah.
In the right direction.
Great.
Finally, yes, all right.
Just a general question, I'm not gonna go in the weeds too much, but you mentioned earlier that you'd been able to build in some things uh, into this budget.
Sure.
Small additions that were of value, just, you know, just.
Actually, Jennifer.
Sure.
That'd be great. Yes, let's go.
That's even better. You're adding some things in flat.
Right.
Yep, it might not be reflected here, but you can write notes next to, so you know that, the minutia where I said you can go by, um, this page, right, the, the Mike, Mike's got it up. On any of those pages, we'll go through it, and you, I'll tell you which function code, and you can write your notes.
Sure.
Right on those areas.
I mean, just, you know, two, three-minute highlight.
Sure, let's start from the top, a workout way down. Um, yeah, I'm gonna go for material items here, material items only, um, meaning ending over a ten thousand dollar adder, I'm, I'm gonna focus it on. Okay. Something that was not budgeted last year, but should have been, uh, is extracurricular leadership and M C S S stipends, which was missing, that's in function code twenty-one twenty under guidance. So that was a, a extra fifteen thousand, we built it, and that's important, we needed that.
Okay, you're talking about the first page.
Yeah, twenty-one twenty very well could be that first page, and, and, no, it is actually page two on the student support services guidance.
Okay.
So the function code, you'll see it's in that gray box next to function.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So when I read that, I can put your, put your, so fifteen thousand, that is, it's all in the, um, stipend, stipends fall under salaries, it's an object code one hundred. So that's part of it.
Is that the one that went from one seventy-nine to one ninety-two with the twelve thousand five hundred entries, or not? Is your guidance twenty-one twenty?
Oh, yes, sorry, you're looking at the summary. If you wanted to go to the minutia level, it would be right there on this line, twenty-one twenty.
Okay.
Salary, but yes, you are correct. Ellen was looking at the, so that page, here's some P D. Basically, well.
We'd be, but it's more going to be centered around, like, leadership team, people. Having people also have some more mentoring opportunities, also, like, someone may be running our Facebook page or other positions that are critical for our school, however, time consuming, we wanna make sure we're.
Sure.
You know, valuing that time.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Paying for it.
Cool, okay, thanks.
But along the lines of professional development, which is what you asked for, even though that's not part of it, we did beef up professional development and the tuition reimbursement, so that would be function code twenty-two twelve. We increased that by ten thousand, because we have a lot of new teachers.
Yes.
Who very well could be going back and getting.
They're unprovisional, so they're gonna have to take classes to strengthen their, their craft and continue moving forwards.
Great, so we beefed that up. Um, other material items, one minute. I don't know how this was.
It's like library benefits, library.
Well, that's, that could be a change in benefit elections, so like a healthcare election, we know that's, yeah, that's, because we know health gives up twelve percent. We added, uh, right, two thousand dollars to the school board for a combination of travel and professional development opportunities, like the V S B A conference, so that was long overdue, even past, for years, and felt like we never had the ability to do so, because things were so tight. That's not really that material, but it's important to note.
Yep.
Also, something added for, that we could do staff appreciation.
Yep, that was added, yep, staff appreciation for the school board, that's been added, so that between that, and that's almost four thousand there, thirty-seven fifty. Yes, good call.
How much was that at first?
Seventeen fifty, so two thousand for travel and professional development for the conferences, and then seventeen fifty for staff appreciation.
Okay.
For the school board's, uh, ability to, to approve. And, and there, so that would be function code twenty-three eleven of school board, in case you were wondering.
Yeah.
All right. We also put in legal fees. It was, was not budgeted in twenty-five, and in twenty-four, there was thirteen thousand five hundred in actual spent, so we, we beefed that up to make sure we have legal coverage again.
In that same box.
Yeah, that's in, well, it's actually, no, that's in, uh, under principles, we put, so that's, uh, the principal function code twenty-four ten. So again, long overdue, you gotta have a budget for items that pop up like this, otherwise it's just.
Heavy on the professional services.
Yes, I think exactly.
Fifteen hundred to sixteen thousand there.
Yep, exactly, yep, good. Okay, we also beefed up. Uh, look, we know the campus needs lots of repairs, and in the past, you could easily argue, we've never had enough. So we, we, we took the liberty of adding thirty-four thousand, uh, to non-technology repairs and maintenance. So this is under your, your plant operations and maintenance facilities, under function code twenty-six ten, that's why those professional services are up. Thirty-four thousand, you'll see that. Pretty material.
Under property services.
Yes, four hundred object code, that's correct, function code twenty-six ten, object code four hundred series, correct.
Thirty-five, you said, thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-four thousand.
Okay.
Thirty-nine.
Well, it might be, you know, there's other things built in, like, uh, insurance, insurance went up.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of things went up, but of thirty-four thousand is directly attributable to repairs and maintenance.
Okay.
And we know we could easily make that more.
Well, we have the.
Based on this information, we'll see what the tax rate impact is, maybe we beef that up even more, I know we could use it.
Yeah.
The money will go fast.
Great.
All right, those are the biggest, those are the biggest ones, um, that I, I'm really, uh, excited about.
I think, I think the other point to make is that those are the sort of things that we have in the past not built in.
That's a nice place to put it.
Come back to bite us on the deficit end, so you're sort of protecting yourself, uh, at the front end, being able to, great.
I did modify a position, um, within the budget as well, so it's, it's called hair, like a para, but also like a wellness-based person. We definitely noticed that we really do need someone to kind of staff for the wellness space to give that one-on-one or small group instruction, so we're hoping that we can do that. We already had the para position, the general education, um, which right now we're not really utilizing. But, and hopefully soon we will.
You're, you're beefing it up a little bit.
Yeah, I think, I don't think we even beefed it up, I think we just added it in as a, another name, so I had a little more flexibility to offer the position to.
Great.
As we need.
As a para position.
It can also be a wellness space.
Okay.
It's still a para, so.
Thank you.
Erica or Jason, do you have any questions for Mike, or just want to say in cheer, or?
I'm good.
I'm soaking in all the good juju vibes, it's nice.
Yeah, I, there hasn't been a lot of good juju in the, this is, this is awesome, I'm, I'm just tickled pick for this.
Beautiful. Okay, happy to have some good news, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, and look, it's just the beginning. Once we start to get the other information, we can still continue to shape, modify, adjust.
Do you, do you expect that to be here before the fourth Monday in December?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the numbers we need to put information in front of you, so you can really sink your teeth into from it, what are we gonna present to the community? I, I had to guess, we're talking second we get to summer, we'll have everything, everything.
What we've done in the past, if I'm remembering correctly, of course, you can, and frankly, I've noticed too, once Mike says, yes, I've got it all for you, that I sent out a, here's some dates, and then we, we picked a, a date to meet early in December.
Yeah.
So that would be the C L A as well as the yield and the.
C L A.
Equalized pupils, or whatever they call it now.
Homestead yield, income yield.
Yeah.
Long-term weighted average A D Ms, uh, the non-resident, wait, there's a lot of things we're waiting on.
Yeah. Great.
Yes. You ready to move on? Thank you very much.
Great.
Thanks, Mike.
It was easy, it was a great process.
All right. May I?
Yes.
I just have your person.
On my campaign.
That's right, that's right, you're always coming to see me.
I do.
So we're on next steps for sustainability.
Yeah, there we go. Looks like a, a good step we just saw on the screen, right? Yeah. Do you want me to talk about that, or you want to?
Want you to lead us out?
Okay, sure. So, yeah, our sustainability committee met, uh, I think, two, two and a half weeks back, and Jennifer was not able to join us, we had a great meeting, and I think our discussion at that meeting was, uh, what are our focuses for, what can we as a committee do to keep the school sustainable? And we noticed that we had had a couple of good forums, uh, one thing we wanted to continue is try to communicate better with the community on what the school does. We see that as positive in not only increasing, uh, understanding and maybe supporting the community for the school, but also potentially having some, uh, larger number of kids come into the school. And so, on a couple of different fronts, we talked about, um, doing more in the way of talking about school. One was, uh, at our last forum. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Nice, nice, one with Coach Two. At our last forum, we talked a good bit about, uh, how P B L works across the school, and we had, I think, a great presentation from staff, but we did not have a lot of community members show up, and so we're working, uh, through a couple of different ways to get that information out. One is Jennifer's gonna do a straight-on newsletter about what P B L looks like in different, uh, parts of school. We're also talking. We're also talking, our, our teacher, Amy is working with a couple of students to put out a pamphlet slash brochure about what it looks like. And we're also looking down the line about potentially making a video. So we're making PBL more understandable to kids and families in the community. We see as kind of a, a no-brainer, because it is kind of a new thing to a lot of families and they want to know more about how it works. The second piece that we talked about, the second part of our meeting was, how do we present to both this community and the larger community? Good things the school does. This started from talking about maybe having a group go out to schools like Walton and other choice towns in the SU. But we decided that it might be more impactful to have that kind of a presentation right here. And advertise it really help heavily so that we can reach out to those schools and hey, come here on a night in January. It's going to be the end of our first semester. We'll have presentations from students about what they've done through PBL. We'll also have a meal, you could actually have some music. And so the idea was to have something that not only prospective students and families could come to, but also showcase to the community what we do. And so our group decided to meet, have two meetings in preparation for that. One in the week after Thanksgiving and another one, I think, the first week in January. To really figure out what that night is going to look like and have plenty of time for PR and organization. So I think that'll be really helpful. I think the more that you can get people in the building, showing them what kids are doing is going to be positive. And hopefully it will, you know, our big hope is that not only does it increase awareness, but it might draw some new students in school. So that's what our push is as a committee, as a committee in the near term. Ellen?
One thing that I was going to bring up under that, but now I feel like isn't needed is, you know, we had sort of talked about maybe sending out a survey to taxpayers, but in the community. And, and really my thought was sort of ahead of what might be again, a difficult budget year to be talking about what some of the options might be. But after that presentation from Mike, I feel like maybe we're going to have a budget that we're not going to have to work so hard to sell. That we're going to be able to set, show that it's in good shape. And so maybe, maybe we just continue on that path of trying to bring in more students and not need to necessarily get ahead, get ahead of the budget question or the, you know, the taxpayer.
I think it's, I think it's a really good message to, to have the community to say we, we've improved some of the things we're doing and the budget is flat. Because otherwise, I think there's been this sort of understanding that it's just going to be this flight path. And at some point it's going to break, you know, we can't, we can't do this every year. So.
I, I thought that myself and I probably communicated it and I'm glad to have been through draw.
Yeah, so anyway, hats off to the administration.
Yeah.
For working the budgets you did.
Well, we also made a, a real budget. So I've been writing down things that I know I needed for this budget to go through. So it was not, so we just moved some monies around to different spots, which is really nice. But it's one that we will able to sustain.
Good.
Next year.
Good. That's great. Having what you need.
Yeah.
It isn't just we're going to scrape by and try to do better. Actually, we have what we need.
It's still lean and it can be still lean, which is great.
Yeah.
You know, we want to balance that out, but we, within that though, we still have thirty four thousand dollars in repairs that we can potentially continue to do on top of the.
Right.
Potential. Yeah, as well. So.
That's awesome. Thank you.
And so one other note that I just made, if the budget continues to look so good after Mike gets the numbers from the state, maybe we would even want to consider adding a part-time sort of marketing position. And John and I have sort of talked about this, but it's a lot on you to be, you know, and right now we have the sustainability committee, but those are volunteers like to play on this night. But like, we used to sort of have Sonia as the community engagement person. And, you know, when I do like the VSBA conference and the webinars, I'm a little envious sometimes of towns that have this. And I went to a couple of different workshops, like buy people who, that's their profession. And I was even thinking, like, we have members of this community who are great writers. I'm not going to name names, but who I, you know, might want a part-time job. They could be like, just come and get to know the school and then go to Walden and go to, you know, go to some of our school choice towns and, and do presentations there for them. And, and be able to put out more information locally to our community to just be that liaison to our community and other communities. So maybe if there's money there, we would even budget for that if we could still do it within, you know. So just a thought that I had about sustainability and making sure that we, you know, to do outreach to the homeschool families and let them know what options are and things like that. So.
So Gilfoil was, is an organization that presented for the communication, communication person, basically. The idea for Gilfoil, they are a PR firm, but they have a sliding scale and they charge per student. So if you've, you know, a school of two hundred, I'm actually, I got another email from them today and I was interested in talking to them. They do everything from, obviously, you know, the, the more. They have many, a, a million of things that you can choose from, like a, a menu. And, you know, you can, you pay for those different things, whichever the things that you're interested in. So I think that'd be one thing that we could ask them to come and do a presentation, whether it's online, things that nature. I'm going to be looking at them from an SU lens and maybe it'll take care of it for us if I'm able to afford it out of my budget from, from an SU level. But if that's something you're considering, it may be more economical for you guys to work with firms such as that. And I just throwing that out there. So.
And I don't know if it's something we're considering, but it's the first I've just given it.
It'd be, it'd probably be more economical. And I'm happy to provide, if it's something you guys would like me to pursue for you guys individually, happy to organize them to do a presentation for you and get some information.
They're going to do a similar presentation with the SU.
You're asking a good question. I got it. My second email from them today.
Okay.
And I've not gotten that far besides I saw that second email today. We're talking about it right now. So I thought I'd just bring it up as a, as a possibility.
Right.
Anybody not, not interested in just hearing from them about looking.
Yeah, maybe a January meeting for them. Is that okay?
See what they got. Yeah, see what they do and see what they might charge.
Yeah.
Then we'd know what to maybe add into the budget if, or, or maybe we could even find that out ahead of time, just to know if, if we'd have room for it in the budget.
Correct. And I bet we can get some of that information as well. You, I don't remember if you, you were there, a gentleman who was more of a shorter stature at the community. PR, I would say, presentation that he was from Gilfoil and he's a former principal and ended up working for them after retirement because they did good work for them.
I think I heard that one. Might as well hear what.
Yep.
Maybe they could bring in the revenue.
I'd be happy to put the, on that, reach out to them, put that on the agenda for you guys as a presentation.
If we could find out first, like a ballpark of cost, so we would even know.
I think they'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. And then, then once we hear our more.
I can give you that information in December and then you guys could decide from there.
Just because we need to know if it's something we might want to. I mean, might add to the budget.
Yep.
Sound good, everybody?
Sound good. Yeah.
Great.
Also like the idea of having a local person, but we've got to fish around and see what we got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea. What are they, what are your options available and what are your costs?
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody, I haven't even mentioned to work with somebody.
We've got somebody in mind.
Yeah, I do.
Just saying, when we actually, always say, from an administrative lens, if we don't own the person, it's much easier to, if we're not happy with. And if they're local, that might make it very difficult to have that conversation.
Good point. Yeah, that's a good point. Always pros and cons.
Yep.
All right. Any other next steps for sustainability or questions for Chris or me from the sustainability committee lens or anything like that? So we're kind of agreed that we don't need to do the survey right now and start to. Sure. Yeah. Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that, I just remember last year wanting to be able to hear from the community when we sort of got to that point. And that we were very limited in what you can actually put like in the town meeting, you know, and because it's not, because it's all Australian ballot, it's not the community conversation. So, but I, I feel like we don't need to either. Okay. All right, moving on, confirmed date of board retreat. We had mainly, they were Saturdays. Thank you to all who took the poll and looking at calendars. I thought we could firm that up now and pick a date. So it was pretty much all the Saturdays in. That I had put on the poll in January and February were available. Pull up that doodle poll quickly, but I'm pretty sure it was all of them. Anybody want to? Throw out a date or all throw one out, just going to that doodle poll now. And.
You think it might be valuable to have the, the retreat after we set our budget, which will probably be about the fifteenth of January. To have that sort of look more long range after I made that sort of.
Have that few behind us.
Yeah.
Yep. So we were looking at Saturday, January eighteenth, that was the first, well, we, January fourth, but we'll wait till after budget, I agree. So January eighteenth was the first one, or then Saturday, February first was an option. And.
I shoot for the eighteenth of January.
Eighteenth of January, well, to your house, so you're home. So, and then we've got either a sort of nine to twelve with optional stay for lunch, a potluck lunch afterwards, or four to seven or, oh, four to seven. I didn't do one to four that day, but one to four is also, also an option. I actually, I think four to seven was a different date. I don't know what I'm doing here. So a nine to twelve or a one to four lunch after or lunch before?
I like to lunch after. I like to get up and get it done, you know.
I agree.
Yeah.
So nine to twelve lunch.
Older people tend to take naps after.
That's well.
All right, January eighteenth, Erica and Jason, January eighteenth, nine to, let's say nine to one, nine to twelve will sort of be board retreat and then lunch.
That works, that works for me.
Yeah, that'll work for me too.
Wonderful. We're going to shoot again. I know we were going to do it over the summer, but this worked out great. We delayed it with knowing new people were coming on board. Now we've got our group and let's, let's retreat. And Chris, thank you for hosting us and we'll.
Be glad to, yeah.
You are. No kidding. You said it.
That was easy.
I know. I've been to Chris's house. It's lovely. I think.
It'll be warm for sure, yeah.
Nice. Warm is good. I think Erica, that was your main thing, someplace warm. So.
We've got a large chimney. People tend to back up against, you know, just.
Perfect. Very nice. All right. So speaking of the retreat, do we want to hire a moderator from the Vermont School Board Association? I did get, I did get some pricing so that you have some actual information when making this decision. And, and. The VSBA charges one hundred and fifty dollars an hour plus mileage or five hundred dollars for a half day plus mileage. So I don't know, maybe this would be the, I think we'd say four hundred and fifty, four fifty plus mileage from probably, I don't know where, where they would be coming from. So call it five hundred dollars, five fifty, all told, to have a professional moderator come in. And we had put together an agenda for the retreat when we were going to do it in the summer. And, you know, my, my thought is that we sort of talk about board operations overall. And then we look at the new standards that are coming our way for next summer. Education quality standards, but even more than that, because that's more at the school level, but.
Yeah, I was wondering where.
District quality standards.
Thank you. It's still decent.
Pertain to us and things that we need to be doing.
Agreed.
And there's a nice little survey that the VSBA put together that we can sort of do individually, like how do we think we're doing as a board on these items? And then we could discuss and see where we could want to go. And, and a big part of the VSBA conference that Erica and I attended was on vision and not also not Mike, sorry, lots of people attended in this room. And was on vision setting. And, and, you know, I, I really think that like even at the SU level, we're talking about a strategic plan. And I think at the board level, we should also have our, like, what are our annual goals? What's our strategic plan? And then what are the ways that we measure if we're successful? So those are the kind of topics. I, I feel that we probably could do it without a moderator, but I would be open to having the moderator depending on what you offer.
I think that you do that moderator, with that one. I think, I think we're at a really good point in terms of not being sort of weighed down by the media, we're going to get this budget through. You know, I don't want to get too positive, but that's been sort of our, our doldrums every January, you know? It just feels like we've taken a step forward. We have a new administration in, in two different offices. And I just think it's a great time for, for us to say, let's look ahead, you know? Let's look ahead and see what we can do to improve. We've made some steps already. And I don't think there's going to be a lot of arm twists that's needed to get, have that discussion happen, my take. And I, I always also think it's nicer, it will say, you know, we've been at this for a while or adults, we can, we can focus for three hours and then pay five hundred dollars. Have somebody make us do it, you know?
Okay.
And we don't need to be doing like Robert's rules or anything like that for this retreat, because it's not, there aren't going to be orders of business that are being done.
As long as you're not doing, yeah, if you're not doing school board business, you're good.
Yeah, we're doing the business of the board, but not board business. So, and Erica or Jason, are you on board with not having a moderator or would you like to, do you have any thoughts about that?
I'm fine without a moderator.
Yeah, me too. That seems fine. I wasn't quite sure why we would need one in the first place.
Just wanted to bring it, bring it up. Sometimes it's recommended, you know, some boards also have like twelve board members. And I mean, even when I was on the VSBA call the other day, you know, there's the SBA chairs that are like, we have a really contentious board and we have, you know, so sometimes that, they might want somebody in the room to.
Switzerland.
Moderate, yeah. But, yeah, I don't feel like we need that here either, but just wanted to present options. Okay, great. So that would be a no. As far as retreat topics, I would say I will send, resend the agenda that we have in the summer as a draft. And then anybody that would like to suggest any additional topics or say not necessary or great, just keep it as is. And but I'll send that out to you all tomorrow, probably. Resend old agenda draft. And I welcome all of your input on that. Okay, I don't think we need to vote. We have our date, January eighteenth, nine to, nine to twelve with lunch from twelve to one.
Okay.
Ready to move on?
We can potluck the lunch, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Absolutely. Potluck the lunch. Next year we'll have it in our budget that we can like buy lunch. The CCSU level when Clayton brings us in food from, from the restaurant, Danville, like, you've got money for this. We're potlucking for now, though.
True.
Okay, and December regular meeting date. And first of all, well, we probably will need an additional meeting in December, but we don't know yet when Mike will be, Mike and Jesse will be ready. But our regular meeting would be the twenty third, which probably nobody really wants to do, two days before Christmas. And we could just now say that we will hold off on the date until we see, once we reschedule it earlier December one, maybe that would only, maybe our only December one. So for now.
Like the fifteenth or something.
Yeah.
Get the number second week, so.
So canceling twelve twenty-three meeting and date TBD when we hear from Mike and Jesse.
Sure.
Does that sound to pay with everybody? Okay. Yes, does that work for?
It, it, yes, I was just trying to scan ahead and looking at other board meetings and trying to. Just plan.
Say, maybe if you could work with Mike and Jesse to see what date works for administration.
And then I'll send it to you.
Couple of options and I'll send them out to the board members.
That sounds good.
I know we, I'd asked you guys before and we picked, I think, like December seventeenth or eighteenth work, but we, maybe we would have been doing it before then, once we hear from Mike. Okay, TBD on the December meeting.
Yeah, negotiating councils on the eighteenth, which is a Wednesday, so that'll be up, but seventeenth still open is an option.
Okay, so possibly if everybody could sort of keep twelve seventeen as a potential calendar, Tuesday.
Tuesday, of which, I'm sorry.
December seventeen.
Yep, yep, I've got that open right now.
So.
Six o'clock at this point.
December seventeenth is a Tuesday.
Yep.
Let's keep that open, everybody, if we can, for six o'clock on December seventeenth.
You are welcome. You are welcome. And we do record these.
Right.
Yeah, I know. I had to do that.
I understand. Just let you know.
Come to ours, Mrs. Lee. Alrighty, so we are good with that and we don't need a vote for that. So now we do need a motion to move into executive session in accordance with one VSA three thirteen eight three appointment, employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee. Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Chris. Do you want a second? Thank you, Alicia. And so all those in favor, no, any discussion? All those in favor of going into an executive session to discuss the appointment, appointment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
You guys have it?
And we've got two people online, Eric and Matt. I'm going to ask you folks to step out, please, from the online meeting at this time.
Eric, and who else?
There was a person on there named Matt.
Not you?
Nope.
Other than that? Oh, okay.
You're off.
Great. So that's you, though, that's the, okay.
Yep, that's me, C S C S U, and Jason, I've got Erica, so we're all here.
Don't go far, please. We probably will want to speak with you in a little while.
Yep.
Thanks. Should I have you to text me?
Yeah. Yeah.
We'll text you.
All the math is. Sounds good. Thank you.
Everybody. Spin over.
Yeah.
And I'm going to get pause.
Who's in the foliage picture here?
That's my house.
Oh, yeah.
Court recording, if you'd like to say we've come out.
We are, we are now have exited executive session, and the board will take no action on our discussion of the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee. But thank you, everybody, for a very good conversation, and we sort of know that we will continue this conversation at our December meeting and have a resolution on the vote at that time.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And that is our, our last order of business, and it is currently eight oh four. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion base.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Does anybody have any other business before we adjourn?
Just got to repeat back here.
Don't worry, just walk us out. It's all good.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
All right.
Okay. Right through for the end of it, we probably put a bunch of the home, sorry about that.
Totally fine.
Talking.